So, good evening, welcome to the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. I am Lisa Ellsworth, Chair of the Planning Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hernandez Mahan.
Here.
Berlin.
Here.
Corning.
Here.
Bravo.
Here.
Bartel.
Here.
Larson.
Larson is here.
Larson, sorry. I don't, I don't have my script, that's how informal we are, and Chair Ellsworth.
Here. All right, may we, everybody doing me in the roll, or the flag salute, please? I firstly, I just to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections or additions? No, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Do we have, do we have any business from the audience, anyone online that, on something that is not otherwise on the agenda? I don't see anyone. Okay, communication from staff?
None.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to have an open work session. Do we have a staff report to start with?
Uh, very, very informal. More of a conversation. Uh, so I do have a PowerPoint. Hopefully, I'm only gonna go through like ten minutes of background, and then uh, what you guys got in the mail about a week ago was basically a packet full of discussion questions. Uh, so we're looking at food carts, food cart pods. This is kind of here tonight because a couple of months ago, I think, Council passed a resolution to direct staff to look at a number of topics in our development ordinance for updating, uh, this is one of them. So, before I go on, I do want to just, I'm sure we're all fairly familiar with these, but I have a couple of working definitions to make sure we're on the same page. So, uh, food cart, uh, any sort of vehicle, or trailer, or truck, that's self-propelled, or can be pulled, or pushed, and primarily used for the sale of food or beverages directly to a customer. Is anyone not familiar with these? Very good, very good. So, uh, the working definition I have for a pod is a grouping of three or more carts on private property. There's associated amenities like seating areas, restrooms. Couple examples, uh, from the uh, Willamette Valley area, I think both of those are up in uh, the metro area. And I do want to just chime in real fast here, and so Woodburn, like, the city's not the only entity uh, that would be potentially reviewing these. So, there is a pretty, pretty top-down review that occurs for these. Starts with the Oregon Health Authority. And then, uh, so there's various statutory and administrative rules uh, that are applied to uh, all manner of restaurants, uh, including these mobile restaurants, uh, food, uh, food carts. So, the Marion County Health and Human Services Department is kind of the uh, local body that runs the rules for OHA. And then ea- each county has their own health department for these types of things. Um, and then more locally here, we have our own rules on where they can be located. You know, restrooms and uh, seating areas, uh, pavement, parking, those types of things. And then, uh, the Woodburn Fire District would also do a review, especially if there's uh, cooking equipment, you know, propane, natural gas, uh, things like that, if there's tents and other more temporary structures, they look at, uh, making sure those are properly anchored. So, number of eyes are supposed to be on these, uh, from various angles to make sure they're safe. So, uh, I wanted to first outline our current rules and practices. Uh, I'll go over a few challenges that, uh, we experience as a result. And then, uh, that's kind of why, why we're talking about this in general, about why, why we want to amend our code is because we are dealing with some challenges, uh, across multiple departments, uh, with these. And separately, though, there's also, they're really popular right now, and especially through the pandemic, uh, with a lot of restaurants shutting down, or going to like takeout only, this, uh, really kind of blew up as a, uh, an opportunity for folks to still uh, gather together outdoors and share meals. So, nowadays, we see a lot of those pods forming as, uh, really unique, uh, places to gather. It's almost like an outdoor food court, so there's, you know, you have multiple cuisines to pick from, there's beer garden, things like that, so. There's the, the economic kind of component of it being a very, very popular, uh, thing right now. So, anyway, current rules are pretty slim. Right now, our development ordinance, uh, only allows food carts in our industrial zones. Uh, there is a small provision for downtown to allow the push carts, if you had like, uh, pre-cooked hot dogs, prepackaged ice cream sandwiches, or something like that. There is a small allowance downtown for you to use the sidewalk for a push cart. But otherwise, they're only allowed in industrial zones. Otherwise, other than that, uh, you can't be in the public right-of-way. Uh, don't block a driveway, an entrance, parking aisle. And then we also have a parking requirement. But there's really no other rules in there about restroom buildings, um, shelter structures, uh, do we have pavement requirements, landscaping, screening, if you're next to a uh, commercial or residential property. We don't have.
If that's the case, Dan, why do I see them all over town?
So, before you move on, I actually have a question about the WDO.
Yes.
And the regulations. So, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, could have changed over the years, but food carts are also allowed for temporary events and things. So, there, there is provisions for like Fiesta, or a downtown event. So, that, when you're talking about this, you're talking about food trucks that are going to be semi-permanent, am I correct?
Yes, that's a very good distinction.
Because the big, a big part of, I was involved when those ordinances were written, and a big part of it was, we wanted them to be mobile, not just a food cart, taking a shop wherever they wanted.
So, I was gonna ask that, it says food carts, but it means a food truck.
We have the truck, a trailer, um, uh, a push cart, uh, a wagon, and the in-all. And so this is a really good segue, because we get probably, what, a dozen, fifteen, at least? Especially now that it's getting nicer out, uh, folks come into our front counter, and they own a food truck, or a trailer, and they want to know where they can set up. And so we explain the rules, um, you're you're only allowed in the purple and blue areas, and that's almost always not where they want to go, they want to go in the orange area along ninety-nine. More the commercial areas along ninety-nine, as that's where more of the.
Isn't that where they are now? By Safeway or something?
That's the second part he's gonna get to. And, and this is, I, I wanted, I wanted Dan to go through and explain some of this, because it's not something we need to spend a lot of time on, but I want everyone to understand sort of what we have now, because that really tells us the kind of requests we get from most people. Which is, maybe they don't want to sign a lease for a year to go into a pod, they just want to open up for a little while and see if they can, you know, get something to work for a short time, the vast majority are like that, that we get at the counter. Which leads to the what actually.
So, that temporary marketing permit has actually been what we've been using over the past, what, four or five years? And it allows them to locate in these commercial areas on a temporary basis. Uh, they're good for sixty operational days. And so that's kind of been our, like, holdover rule, but we've had some challenges result from this. So specifically for that temporary permit, that's not really the spirit of what that temporary permit was, I think, intended for, it was like you said, Chair Ellsworth, it's more of the the larger events, Cinco de Mayo, Fiesta, uh, things like that, uh, or the seasonal sales like Fourth of July, firework stands, Christmas trees. That's more of what the spirit of what that temporary marketing permit was. So, um, part of what we're hoping to fix with this legislative amendment is clarifying that outdoor marketing permit by kind of separating food carts and food cart pods that are more of a, a permanent establishment, and separating that out from those kind of one-offs, bigger special events.
So, can I ask a question?
Of course.
If you're, you're giving them this temporary permit, where do they, are they paying rent to someone, or are they parking on a parking lot for free?
Yeah, so we do have a property owner signature on the, uh, permit application form. Um, so presumably, they would be paying some sort of rent to locate in a parking stall.
That's saying they're in a location, okay.
But this does create enforcement challenges for specifically our, our code enforcement officers, because this isn't really their highest priority, they got bigger fish fry out there. Um, but those permits are only supposed to be good for sixty days. And a lot of times, we've got a lot going on, we're not out there proactively, kind of, well, time's up, you gotta get out. So many times, folks are staying longer than the sixty days would allow.
And, and the other issue is they'll just open on a weekend, right? If you own a food cart truck, you're only open, say, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or something. And now that sixty days, they're out there for like nine months, and maybe, because they're sixty-day clock run, so this, it is that, so I just wanted, the, the reason, I can tell you, the, the reason that we're looking at these food cart regulations is because they frustrate the heck out of the Planning Division and the Code Enforcement Office, the way they're currently written. They just don't serve the community well, that, that's not really what they were intended to do. It's not working, and there's much better way to do it. They weren't really written this way, I think Dan made clear. The idea that they would be in industrial areas, and the only rea-, the only requirement is don't block a parking space and have some extra parking parking areas, that's really for these temporary drive-ins, serve the employees, right?
Yeah, that's a kind of a different.
For burrito truck or something, and then they leave. That's what those.
Can I ask, why don't we have an event permit for things like Fiesta, for things like Cinco de Mayo and Community Connection Day, where it's very specifically only for that event?
So, we do, we have a, it's called a, uh, outdoor marketing special event permit, so when Cinco comes in and gets set up, and even when the city does their events, they get them, but those are rolled right now into the same permit for someone who wants to have the, the three-week, uh, Christmas tree stand, or the firework stand out front. The fire department looks at it, we give it a quick look, but those aren't full-blown reviews, they're quick in-and-out operations, they don't need a full review. And what's happening is these food trucks are getting locked in with that same group. And they're kind of going in and saying, great, I'm just like that, that taco stand, or I'm just like the, the, sorry, the fire, the fireworks stand for the Fourth of July. And they wind up being there for a long time, and it's, and they're on every sort of aching corner that you can find, which is good or bad, but they're sort of unregulated, and that's more the concern for.
What about that food truck on the post office? Is it still there? Remember, we talked about it a while.
Across the street, from the post office, right? Good example, so it was in the old City Hall building. They came in, got a special event permit, right? For a temporary outdoor marketing, um, to have it on that property, got permission from the property owner, so it was a legal food truck that they could operate there for up to sixty days.
But it's been there for months.
It's gone now, they've been, yeah, they've been gone for a while. But, but the idea is, I, I can only regulate them when they open their doors, because I can't tell you, you can't park a vehicle on someone's lot. The regulatory restrict, it's way too hard for us to regulate that, check every hour of the day when they're open and closed, we can't do that, nobody does, so, that's our goal, we want to come out clearly distinguish between these real two different things, these food cart temporary trucks, say, that come in on a, a one-stop basis, and the others are, have a pod where we can put these things. And that's a, that's where there's a lot more regulatory, um, sort of ability for you all to get involved, that's more like a site plan that someone says, great, I want it to look like this, and it has some kind of standards and requirements.
Yeah, the only thing I, I wanted to add is, um, when we have folks come into our front counter, and we share our rules with them, almost always, they'll say, well, what about the, the guy up the road, and, you know, they don't see consistent rules being applied, and that makes it extra hard for us. Um, so that's another goal we can hopefully accomplish. Again, tonight, we're just kind of chatting and, and going through discussion questions, so.
You wouldn't have to have a pod of them in order to have consistent regulation, you could have all of them have a, have a landlord where they park, and a particular license, and pay their annual fee. They don't all have to be in a large group in order to accommodate that, do, do they?
No, we could write a regulation that says you can put a food cart anywhere in a commercial district with authorization from a, which is close to what we currently have now, right?
You could do something more restricted than that, but you don't necessarily need to have.
Right, but maybe, maybe we get into that, look at, and that's all within the zoning code, that's exactly within your purview, the outdoor marketing regulations are in there, um, and what we currently require, so that's, we can definitely do that.
Hey, Dan, can I add a little, uh, context on the enforcement piece?
Yes.
Just kind of, uh, when thinking about our code enforcement officers, bear in mind, our code enforcement, we have three code enforcement officers for the city, and they work Monday through Friday from about eight to six, I believe, and I think we have one officer who has limited hours on Saturday. So, when you're thinking about enforcement of food carts, and when they're operating, you know, you have to keep in mind, not only are code enforcement officers super busy with all the other code violations that they're having to deal with, but also, they generally are not working evenings, and they're generally not working weekends, so that's kind of an important piece when we're thinking about this all together.
So, would it be a good idea to give them more, more power to really do something instead of educating them, which is the most ridiculous thing? Because it doesn't work.
Well, hopefully, we can make these clearer and more objective, so they can clearly say, I can see a violation, as opposed to yeah, coming up with them.
That's the problem that's been here, no consequence for anything.
Yeah.
You really need us enforcers, yeah.
We need to square you two in.
Um, I, so about a week ago, I went out and just kind of drove around to some of our frequent flyer sites that we, uh, we get a lot of permit applications in for this temporary permit. Uh, so, uh, one over on Settlemeier uh, is kind of the, the lone example here, that's not on ninety-nine. Um, I know we talked about the one just downtown here. But, uh, I didn't see it when I was going out and about, so. But you can see, uh, this example here, you know, they're on a gravel parking surface, they've got that temporary shelter structure, some picnic tables. And then, uh, kind of the same, similar situation over here, that shelter structure with the picnic table next to the truck. And then also on ninety-nine, uh, corners of Young Street, and then Hardcastle Avenue. These are vacant, or, um, uh, and for the proper, the picture on the right, this is, uh, it's a big property, it has a small, that kind of produce, uh, market on the corner, but there's, it's a big property, so what we're seeing a lot of times is these vacant sites on ninety-nine, or a, a property that has a large parking lot area, underutilized area. Uh, those are where we're seeing these prop, uh, pop up a lot.
That would actually be a good location.
So, uh, one other kind of angle or, uh, mind, mindset to, to look at this through, or lens to look at this through is it's a potential way to, uh, if we could work with this, these property owners on something more formal, through a, a more structured review process, we could potentially work on revitalizing some of these underutilized sites. And then, uh, these two, uh, they're technically outside city limits, but they are along ninety-nine, they could be annexed into the city if the property owners wanted to. Uh, so kind of getting the theme that there's usually structures and seating that come, come with these. So, um, that's my spiel. Now, I wanted to hand it over to you guys. All of the questions that I'm gonna go through on here are, were in the packet, and I printed you off another copy upfront, if you wanted to write on it while we're talking. And then, uh, on the right side here, I kind of just tried to summarize some of the main points from Oregon Health Authority, uh, Marion County rules and requirements for food trucks, um, for our reference.
Those look pretty straightforward, those three from OHA and, and Marion County, that's a really good basis to start with, because they're pretty much cut and dry.
Yes, yep, yeah.
Before we start actually having an, an in-depth discussion, I know we have a guest on the line. It might be more, you know.
Do you want to turn it over?
To let John talk to us for a little bit, in case he doesn't want to stay for all of our deliveries.
Sure.
Okay, um, thanks, guys, uh, my name's John Stromquist. Uh, please just ask me any questions that pop into your mind, but, you know, I'm coming from the developer side, and you know, City of Westland went through a similar situation you guys are going through, and we came to them, they were already discussing, I'll try to make this short, they were already discussing, um, you know, they already had questions about, hey, can we open a food cart, can we open a pod? Things like that, they had nothing in their code, so we approached them this, with this redevelopment of an old gas station. It was in, uh, their historic business district, so there were a lot of challenges with the overlay of the building design and things like that. But I believe they really wanted this building to change, it was the only eyesore on the, on the street. If you guys are familiar with where this is, it's off the Tenth Street exit, um, in Westland, which is the Old Willamette Historic District. And so basically, I think what happened with them guys is they, they basically liked the project, they wanted to redevelop that particular site, and so, even though they had nothing in their code that said we had to do it a certain way, they ended up wanting to work with us to, to basically as a test case, to see how it all worked out, so there you can see the picture, that was when we bought it, basically, or just, uh, that's what it looked like, they did do, uh, they spent about, I don't know how much money they spent, but I believe it was about ten million bucks to redesign or redevelop the main street, the historic street, uh, Willamette Falls Drive, which they, they added a bunch of parking spaces on the main street there, which enabled this project to be feasible from, to be redeveloped, and so that's why they really liked the idea. But, um, like you guys, they didn't have anything solid in their code, um, to define exactly what the criteria was to allow us to do that. So, we had to go, um, get approval by the Historic Design Review Board, and then it had to go to the Planning Commission, and that was probably the biggest hurdle that we had to go through to, to get the project, um, accepted, basically. So, I know there's a lot there, but, um, this basically went from just an old ugly gas station to what you're seeing there in front of you, so. And they, and we, and then, but all the food carts had to go through, um, like Dan was saying, uh, other regulations in order to be allowed to come into the, to the pod, if that makes sense.
And do you have restrooms and other amenities, sanitation, things along that line?
Yes, so that was something that, although it wasn't in the code, um, when we presented, when we pitched our idea, we said that we would be putting in all the gray water, so each of the eight food carts has its own gray water line that comes up underneath the food cart, that they attach their gray water waste to, all their sinks and, and et cetera, kind of like an RV park would be. Um, and each unit has its own electrical, um, post that connects to, we had, we did have to install a new, um, power hookup for them, which is, which was meter differently than, than the building, the existing building. And then, um, we had to run all new water, and we also piped in all, um, we dug up the ground, we had to put all natural gas, uh, extensions to each food cart, and they had to hook up to natural gas. So, one thing the city did not want, when we talked, um, before the Planning Commission, was they didn't want to see a bunch of portable, uh, propane tanks out there, and we didn't really have the space to do that, to be honest with you, so we wanted everything to be, uh, all the utilities to be extended to the food carts, which made it more sanitary and a lot more feasible to do the project.
So, does the development own the carts, and a restaurant person rents it or leases it, they use?
Yes, yes, we own, um, me and two other partners own the, uh, real estate, and then we lease, uh, each space out to the food carts. Um, and so actually, we still have the same food carts that signed up with us almost two years ago, so there hasn't even been any turnover, although we do have a couple, a few people on the waiting list to get in. So, um, it's obviously been a pretty successful project, I think, from that standpoint, um, which made it better.
So, is it, it's a corporate owner, then, that leases restaurant spaces to each? Each restaurant, each car?
Correct, yeah. And then we actually run the bar, so, there's a bar there that we run, um, but separate from the real estate, as far as reporting goes, but, um, and then the, the real estate side leases out to the, to the food carts, if that makes sense.
So, do you have different, um, cuisines, and was that part of the, um, how you were going to lease them out? I mean, instead of having ten Mexican restaurants?
Yeah, that, that was up to, um, that was up to us, to figure out the best accommodations for the, for the community. And, um, really, another main goal of ours, uh, was to create a really family-oriented meeting space, and that's what it's become, really, kind of a hub point for the community. Uh, but yeah, we, we, we really did a ton of research on who we wanted to bring in. Uh, we actually took a vote from the community, we, because when, when we were doing construction, we opened up the site and asked for recommendations, and we, we actually brought in the top two recommendations that they had, which was Indian cuisine and, um, uh, Mexican, too. And Thai as well, yeah, Thai was up high up there, yeah.
How big is the lot there?
Ten thousand square feet, one hundred by one hundred.
And how many vendor, how many food cart, uh, posse you have there, or trucks?
Eight, eight, eight food trucks, food carts. There's five, if you can see that, looking at that, uh, that orange on the top left picture, there's five lined up in a row there, and then there's three on the opposite side, that red one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is maybe private information, maybe, but do you know approximately the rate on the rent on those spaces?
Yeah, um, it's, uh, we charge twenty-one hundred dollars per, per space.
This, Chris, you're open, uh, are you open, like, how many months a year, what do you do in the winter? I know that you have, you've got like heaters in there, I've been out here before, it's great, great facility, great center. You can see the heaters hanging down on this, and I don't know if you dropped the kind of plastic down to enclose it, and do you have, what kind of, what kind of seasonal traffic do you get?
So, uh, in the, in the off-seasons, we have low, um, low season and high season, high season starts April one, um, and that's kind of what it picks up, it's actually picking up right now, and then the slow season starts in November, uh, and goes through March, so it's like six months. And then the slow season starts in November uh and goes through March, so it's like six months, it's like half a year. Uh, and basically um, it drops by about forty percent overall, the traffic in the slow season. But yeah, and then to keep it warm, you have to bring people in, right? So those heaters are a hundred thousand BTUs, we have six of those that heat up that interior space under the canopy that you're seeing. And then we also, every one of those concrete um stations there, the concrete tables, there's three of those, which are actually the old gas pump islands, right? So we just made those kind of the same way the islands look back in the day, except their tables. Those all have fire that, that come out of each one of those on each side of those pillars. So we, we uh put a lot of, of heat uh into that, and that was an investment we knew we had to make due to bringing people in in the cold, cold season. And then we also have four fire pits too. You can't really see, you can't really see them. Um, but actually you can see them on the left, left picture there. There's everybody sitting around there. We also have a patio um in the upper left that you can't see in these pictures that also has another fire pit. So between all that, you get uh, people will come out, even when it's chilly, they'll come out and uh, and come and eat. Even though it's, you know, it's a lower turnout, of course, cold.
In your opinion, had this been fully covered, do you think that helps your low seasons? Or is that just typical of the food cart industries for the low season?
That is typical. In our research, we heard up to fifty percent, a lot of um locations would tell us expect half the turnout. Um, we think that getting another ten percent in our slow season is a win for us. Um, but yeah, that canopy is a huge deal. When we bought this property, um, we wanted that, um, we needed it covered. We have had, um, we are, have been thinking about um running a curtain along there. It gets kind of windy on that, uh, the south wind blows pretty heavy in there. And putting a curtain that would enclose it, but there's some design standards that um are difficult to get past in City of Westland. Uh, who's been great to work with, by the way, as far as this whole project was, they were really, they were really good to work with. Um, but yeah, we, we have talked about enclosing that. Problem is it just kind of becomes, it becomes kind of a headache. Uh, it's, it's great in many ways and kind of a headache in some ways too, so we're trying to balance that out.
Uh, sorry, I have a bunch of questions. I'm really, uh, they know, this is something that I'm really uh passionate about, but uh, what has been, what is something that you wish you would have done differently, I guess, on this project?
Um, I think we would have covered our patio, uh, we, if we would have, we would have covered the patio, we would have more events that happen there. I think, uh, more paid events. Um, we've actually had a couple wedding receptions, things like that, with a couple hundred people that come in. So I think if we would have prepped it more for bigger events, I think that would have been good. And we're doing some, some things right now uh in that regard. We are covering the patio, for example, which you can't see in this picture, but there's a, it's a twenty-five by twenty space um on the left-hand side of the, of the restaurant or the bar um that we would cover. What else would we do different? Um, maybe put in a little more heat, probably. And um, beside that, uh, not too many things. If we could have built out, we couldn't change the, the bu, building structure, that was part of the um, design standard that we had to meet, we couldn't, we couldn't modify the existing structure because it was in the historical zone, had to leave it the same. I, if I could have, I would have built, I would have built out more interior space. That was, that's the biggest hurdle because you need that in the wintertime. Knowing that we couldn't, was a challenge that uh made me consider, is it feasible if we don't get the numbers that we need? Um, you know, in the wintertime, is it gonna, is it gonna make sense financially? So that's another thing I really was nervous about was, was how many people it could seat inside. Um, and a lot of places that you can build new these days, they, they make sure that they have a lot of covered space, even if they have the, the outside space as well. But that's building from the ground up, I would do it differently, but I would still have a big, really big covered space like we do there.
Do you guys have any noise issues with neighbors at all complaining? Is that anything that's ever come up?
Not too bad. Um, the neighbor to the west of us, uh, they, overall, they've been great. The community loves this project, honestly, I think, and um, just because like I said, it's a great place to meet. Um, there's a lot of kid traffic, and I didn't, I didn't quite recognize there'd be so many kids there. They like to run around and cause trouble. But um, no, the neighbors have been great, the, the gal to the left, you know, knowing that this used to be an old service station. So there were people banging on hammers on cars and trucks and stuff in there for many years. And the people um were around during that time, that the, the gas station closed down in two thousand sixteen, I believe, or fifteen. So um, you know, they have a choice between a restaurant and a gas station, and I think they like what um, how it was redeveloped. Although we do have events there that do get noisy, and there has been a couple. I think we've gotten two times where we, uh, the police have called us and said, you gotta turn it down. But beside that, it's been um, it's been pretty good.
I'm gonna ask, tell me again about the, so you have a separate hookup for each truck to come in? How many do you have again?
Uh, eight, eight units.
You have eight, and each one has its own gas, its own water?
Yes, they each have their own lines. I mean, they each have their own connection at the cart, yes. And they're, they're all metered separately, so we, we charge them for their, their use of the power, let's say. We put meters on each power post, so it tells us every month, I get a reading on how much they used, and I bill them every month. And um, as far as the gray water goes, it all goes, they each have a stubout and it all goes to um, all connects directly to the sewer through one line, but each, each one has a stubout that connects.
But a separate meter for each one?
A separate meter for power and gas, but not, um, no, not for water, no waters, just, uh, just, we just take it and divide it by eight.
I got it, okay.
Yeah, because that one's pretty easy to measure. Um, the other ones are, some use, some of the, some of the uh trucks use a ton of power or gas, right? And some don't use much at all, depending on what they're cooking. So that's why we had to have those metered uh separately. And we, we heard that from other people when we were doing our research. They said, hey, make sure you got a way to tell them, to tell them how much power they're using and how much gas. So that's why we put that in there. And we did have to upgrade, I was sorry, we did have to upgrade um to a two-inch gas line to bring in all that, to bring in all that uh firepower. So there was some utility work there to be done, and we did have to dig up that whole lot, put all this in, obviously.
I have an odd kind of technical question. The trucks that we deal all have their own propane setup? Is that an issue for them when they come in and say, yeah, I'm, you know, it's already, they're already rigged for it. They've got the connections, they've got some kind of fire approval. I think it's a separate approval for the propane tank on their, on their truck. What, what exactly happens when you say, great, we've got a hookup here, you have to use it, we've got the plumbing you have to use?
Yeah, so they have, my understanding of that is you can, you can convert that between propane and natural gas relatively easily. Um, I think it's a couple hundred dollars and you have to hire someone to come in and do it, but most of those appliances have that ability, not all, but most do. And there was a couple instances we had to, they had to change that when they moved in. So basically, we say, hey, you're required to hook up to a natural gas, even if you don't use it, you have to hook up to it, or at least, you know, be registered with Northwest Natural. So it's part of their, it's in their lease, they have to do that, it's a lease requirement to hook up.
And your lease will require like front serving trailers, like it'll tell them where like the layout of how they have to be positioned, right? Or is that like, do they have to modify their food trucks or carts to fit your uh lease requirement?
Yeah, that's a good question. That was a tricky, that was a tricky part, especially when we first started, because you had a truck show up that was, they said, hey, it's on the, it's on the right side if you're faced this way, and it would be on the other side. Um, so we had to do some, some moving around. Now, these days when we have some turnover, which we're probably gonna have uh this midsummer here, just by, in our, our decision probably, just to make, change it up. Um, if, as if they're moving into a specific spot, they'll have to, the truck will have to serve from the front or the side, depending on where they're moving into. So basically, that would be a requirement that we'd say, hey, sorry, you, you don't fit our space, you know what I mean? We'll, we'll have to look for someone else, if that makes sense.
Well, kind of, is there a, like a sign program you have set up? Is there a mast, I can't remember one of them there. Is there a master sign out front? Has everybody sort of like a shopping center and then everybody gets their own limited kind of sign for each cart? And how does the city regulate that?
Uh, we don't have anything, the city regulates the signage and we couldn't, we had to have a uh sign on the front of the building that um adhered to the standards, and then we, we didn't, either we didn't want to, or they didn't allow us to put a sign up that had everybody on there. They just have their own signage on their individual carts, basically. But there's nothing on the building or on the, on the canopy that says who is in the pod, if that makes sense.
You don't have any kind of pole sign or monument sign out front where the old gas station used to be, something?
No, we actually had that taken down, and I kind of wish we would have kept that. I think there was a reason we had to take it down, though. It was the old post sign for the gas station. We could have done something cool, and I think it was a City of Westland regulation or standard that we had to have it on the building and it had to be a certain size on the front. I remember right.
Going back to the sizes of the carts and, you know, they having to either serve or fit, um. All the carts seem about the same size. Is there a limit? I mean, there's one by, behind the, I think this person's playing the guitar, that looks a little different. But do you have a size limit or requirement?
Good question, yeah. The sixteen by eight is the standard, so that red one you're seeing there in the front, the red and black one, um, those are sixteen by eight, uh, actually, all of them on the left there are. The one, the blue one right behind the gentleman with the guitar is twenty feet. And they told us it was only eighteen feet until we got it in. And we said, hey, your cart is way ba, is bigger than what you, what you said. They're like, whoops. So that one was, we made, we made it fit, but um, it was bigger than we wanted to. But, and then we have an eighteen, an eighteen foot on the other side that's not, and these pictures, actually it is on, it's on the right, right-hand side picture, it's that red one uh way in the back there, that one's eighteen. And we put that one back there specifically because it was bigger. So um, on that left side there with a fiver lined up, the sixteen, sixteen by eight is a great size for that side. And then the bigger ones are on the opposite side.
So you know, the, the, the planning commission and ultimately the council here is, is looking to, I'm assuming I'm gonna go out on a limb, come up with some kind of regulations that first encourage this kind of food cart pod, I keep calling it a pod, uh, without being overly restrictive, where I think we're gonna try to be, try to say we don't know exactly what it's gonna look like or what format, you know, might be a small lot, a large lot. But the things that we typically look at is, you know, uh, is there gonna be some kind of seating area? Is, or would we require some kind of restroom area for each one? Uh, utility hookups are important for staff. Uh, even, I'm just thinking about, I don't know how you deal with ADA and these kinds of questions. Lighting at night, you know, we can deal with noise regulations, those types of things. But yeah, with that in mind, what, what, where would we be overreaching? You know, if I said all the carts have to be around the outside of a centrally located seating area, that feels like it might be excessive on its own, but it might be worthwhile saying there needs to be a central seating area um that everyone's kind of sharing in, that has to be covered. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think, I think it could be tricky. I think that could be, in my opinion, we got lucky with being able to have them around the edge surrounding the central eating area, just because of the layout of this lot and the, and the canopy and where it was located and kind of, you think about the gas pumps in a gas station, you know, they kind of, they're equally distributed throughout the canopies generally. Um, with, with sides, so with room on the side of the gas stations um in this old style of like form. So we got lucky with that and we were able to have that naturally fit with um the carts surrounding the, the, the central area. So I think depending on the lot and the existing structure, it would be nice to request that, but I think it might be difficult to accommodate that for um, for pods that aren't laid out that well or similar to this one. Um, so yeah, in my opinion, um, if that would be an hindrance to approval in some way, um, that could be tricky. Um, you might not, they might not be able to do it as often as you might think. I'm just not sure.
I think saying a shared seating area makes sense, not necessarily a central shared.
And the, the reason
Maybe it's in the front or maybe it's in the back.
I bring that up thinking of a, we have a, a pod that exists now uh without regulations. And what we get is each individual truck wants their own, you know, attached shade cover, and then it's just a picnic table, and then it's a janky, you know, sheet metal roof that hangs off something, and then you get nine of these together, and frankly, it's a mess. Um, and we got legal issues, and again, we've got serious building issues and code issues, these things. And again, in my mind, one of the ways you do that is you say, there's a difference between where people eat um, and the areas where they sit, as opposed to structures that are different.
Could that be an issue on the management side that basically is not having any kind of centralized form of services and, you know, just basically taking in the rent?
Yeah, it adds a lot to the cost if you're going, if, if we were to say there needs to be a covered seating area, right? And they say, well, I don't want to do that, I'm just trying to get a food cart pod up going. And they want to have picnic tables and an umbrella, maybe that's good enough. But again, it, it can quickly turn into, without making an investment in something on a site. They, it becomes very happened.
This is perfect. But it's kind of a different situation than what we have, but we could do this if we had investor, yes.
Are you, did you want?
You know, with the clients that you have there, uh, are they generally local? Are they coming from, you know, is this their first one? Is this like their fifth? Do you know any of that, just kind of the backstory on who's actually leasing the space? Because one of my concerns, I think, once we present is, you know, I, I'd like to provide the community. We do have a beautiful, diverse community from all walks of life here, and it'd be nice to have a place for everybody to showcase without having to take out ten million dollars to start up a brick and mortar place. But my fear is then we're just gonna have a lot of, uh, you know, that, I think that's gonna be some of the pushback that we're gonna see as well. Uh, and so do you know, does it stay generally local? Is it people from just far away? I mean, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Are you, are you talking about the food cart operators or are you talking about?
Yeah, the operators themselves, yeah.
Yeah, so I can, I can give you a quick rundown. There's a, there's um a brand new cart that, that joined, that was, it was a startup, but that was related to one of the owners, so we were giving them a shot, and they're still there, they're doing great, but that was, that was a first-time owner, so they had a lot to learn. The other ones are experienced, um, that Thai cart that's uh the blue cart in, in back of that guitarist, they have five food carts, um, one in Sandy, Westland, and uh various other places, and they are very efficient, and they've been doing it for years, and they're, they're great, ton of experience. That red cart and the black cart, they're in that bottom left picture, those, uh, they have four or five carts, they've been doing it a long time. Um, so there's a mix, then there's a young couple um that, that runs the hamburger one that's very popular with the kids. You gotta have one of those, by the way. Um, they uh, they've been doing it for several years, bought their own cart, learned their way in Bend, Oregon, and learned from a guy over there, and then bought their own cart and started off on their own, and we took them on early. Um, you know, because they were taking a chance on us too, right? This is a, this is a new development, uh, we didn't have a ton of experience running this ourselves. We started with buying the building and then redeveloping into kind of a vision we had. So they were all kind of taking a chance on us too. Um, and then that other cart you see on the far right-hand side of the right picture, that kind of maroon cart, they have about three carts, the Indian cuisine cart, so they've got years of experience too. So most of them, and then a couple of them have brick and mortars as well, brick and mortar uh restaurants. And they were expanding into the uh food cart business. So a pretty good mix, but most of them have experience.
Anything particular to note with the one that did not have experience?
Um, no, not really. They just had a steep learning curve, like everybody else, um, with their menu. It's a menu, mostly menu, a lot of people come in and they try to offer too many things, and when they start out and they finally realize you can't have, you know, it can't be an offering like you might have in a, in a, a brick and mortar store. You gotta kind of, you know, tone down your menu. That was the big lesson for them.
Uh, did you guys look at other spots and just kind of in your experience? I mean, uh, to kind of get this, what is kind of a realistic budget for somebody, I guess, just for, you know, for years? Since you've been through this, I guess, was there other sites and just kind of, is it a ten million, is it two million? Is it just any range, I guess, for you that kind of? Because I think that's part of the thing that, um, it's just, we don't always like, is this gonna be super crazy? Or is it something that's achievable by, you know?
Uh, this was a two million dollar project, um, it, it, pretty close. And um, you know, with how beat up the gas station was, it was all about the property value where it was located. And to get, you know, the building, if we didn't, if we didn't have to keep that building per the design standards, uh, historic design standards, we would have probably scraped it and done something else and left the canopy and, and made it different, um, but kept it. So uh, yeah, but, but basically for us, this, we never, I was never thinking about getting into the food cart business. This, this uh building became available. I love the street and I love the, what it had to offer and the, you know, for whatever we put in here, so that was really my attraction to this site. And then it became, hey, what a great spot for a food cart place, guys, let's do it right, and let's make it really a place where people want to come, so let's put in the fire, let's put in the utilities, correct? Let's build out these awesome tables there they can sit at, you know? And then it was a budget, a budget thing and a timing thing, because it was right after COVID, so it was a little tricky. And as we were building it, probably inflation hit, so. And as we were building it, probably inflation hit. So um, that, that was a, you know, it probably cost, probably went up by eight, fifteen to twenty percent on the project just based on that. Um, so anyway, there was, there were some challenges there as well, but, but really the idea was let's get a hold of the site. We love it. We love what they've done to the street. And let's make a great place for people to come and enjoy the neighborhood with some great food carts.
Awesome. All right. I, I know that John's been a wealth of, of knowledge and information for us. But how about we start chatting amongst ourselves now? And I can't tell, do we still have Commissioners Bartel and Lassen on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did, before we, before we move on, did you have any questions in particular for John?
Already asked it.
Okay. I haven't heard anything from Commissioner Lassen, but um, thank you so much. All this information. And you are welcome to stay and, and chime back in, but I think it's a good time for us to transition into chatting amongst ourselves.
Just as a, as a goodbye, I'm, I'll let John know because he was so nice to join in. Uh, when we finally come up with some regulations, I can assure you, we're going to run them past John. Let him do a little red line and do what he'd like to. Thanks, John.
I love to talk more guys. Thanks for having me and, and please come, please come see us. Please come see us. Okay, guys. Thanks a lot. Good luck.
Thanks, John.
Bye bye.
Man, I second the build trip.
I mean, there are beautiful ones.
Awesome guys. It is seriously awesome.
Yeah. Mary, did you see, see right there? That's that fire. Oh, it just disappeared. That was in the middle of the fireplace. Can you go back?
Oh, sorry. The la, the, the Lammer garage side?
Yeah, yeah. The one we were looking at. Yeah, yeah. See, that's a fireplace. Oops. Right there. See, it's a fireplace. Right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of the stones in the middle of the, the.
Is that neat?
So he had to put in underground uh, natural gas lines for all of those um, heating fixtures, the fireplaces.
So it seems like though, there's two different types of, well, of cart. I mean, there's like the industrials where people go for coffee break and, and that's kind of bare bones, right? It's not going to be fancy with all kinds of lights and, and then there's the one where people go with their families and, you know, walk around town.
Yeah, this, this idea, and again, unless you all disagree with, this is probably going to be some kind of temporary one offs and then this permanent spot, right? A location where someone says, I want to op, I want to operate one. And we say, great, I can send you to the place where there's, maybe there's two of these and whatever it is. But then that's privately run. They have to negotiate with the landlord, et cetera. Uh, and we would have to, and we would have some kind of regulations. These aren't complicated regulations. These are really simple in terms of what we, what we look at. Uh, but there need, I think there needs to be some, and that's sort of what we'll get into about these spots. Right? Keep thinking of this. They're different things, right? Uh, and that, that's important. And we're going to have to sort of address them differently.
Well, you mean they're different things. You mean the one we just saw?
One is a, right, one's a temporary setup. A temporary setup in a, in a, we'll decide where you want it to be. It might ju, it might be in any parking lot.
Okay.
Right. And the other is a pod that exists.
But is it possible we could have something like that?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, these are, well, look, I mean, West Lynn's super high end. That's an expensive part of town.
True. Yes.
I mean, that's a, that's a nice.
At that rate.
Right. But look, the, the truth is, there, there was a, there's an astroturf. Right? He just threw down turf on top of the concrete, cleaned up that site. And it's a nice sort of pavilion in the center, but honestly, I, I don't know.
The whole design was very nice, I thought. I mean,
It is. And we see this everywhere. They're a centrally located eating area and then they ring them with food cart jack. But what, what happens is they say, I have a space designated, right? And I've got the utilities hooked up. Sign your lease. I'll set you up here. And then once you get this sort of critical mass of more than three, you get people to come and say, well, now I'll choose this one or that one. And they have a place to be.
They had the place before to, to win the parking and they had the street. I mean, yeah, it's a nice street with a lot of traffic and all the stuff they built around it. I mean,
Yeah, the main street on theirs. Yeah, well, it's very nice.
But it was just something you would like to be part of.
Right.
And as opposed to, as it, as opposed to like ninety-nine is, so there's where we, I mean, there's going to be baby steps because what you really want to do first is, is to uh, regulate the people that want to open up along ninety-nine. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, then Dan has some pictures up here. I mean, that's essentially, it's just a cleaned up area with the carts lined up and then you have picnic tables in the center. And that's not expensive to get set up.
So you want to gather them all in one place?
I think that would be a great idea. I think it works. It works better for everybody.
Same time.
Right. Uh, I think that's generally what people like, right? I think if I had a food truck, you want to be around other food trucks that they work together. That's how it works.
And that's why I asked about the lease, right? Because I think if you go ask them, they're probably paying fifteen hundred bucks or more at some of these janky little places. And that's, that's what it is. You know, they're not there for free.
They would.
So I think if you told the business owner, listen, we got the place, we're going to attract double the amount of people you're attracting. I think it's a win-win and that's why they're so popular. And this is why I've been, I've been behind emailing them about this for months. And I've, you know, I've tried to uh, do, you know, uh, but I do think that it's a win-win for the city. I was telling them that the city of Fairby, I don't know if the city of Woodburn would ever do that, but they actually leased the land themselves and appointed somebody from the city to run it. They're money pits. I mean, they're collecting, these guys collecting almost twenty grand in rents. Probably making twenty grand in alcohol sales or fifteen or whatever. I mean, they're making money. They're, but it also provides, you know, a space for kids, a space, you know, kids are picky, families are, you know, I go to a restaurant, it's tough to find something. Wife wants Chinese, I want Mexican. These are beautiful places to just go and do that. You can walk to it. You can sit there. You can have it, you know, so. I think they're a win-win for communities. That's why they're popping up everywhere. And I think it should be something. I've talked to Frank, you know, about this as well. Like this would be awesome if we can bring something because we are very unique. I think you would have some awesome cuisines that just, we haven't been introduced to yet in this area, you know?
I, I'm, I've been here for a while. And I remember actually being on the commission or the committee, whatever, that looked at our existing ordinances. And back then we didn't have pods like this. We didn't have pods that were, that had a management on staff, that had a, a owner that you could go to. But they were trucks popping up wherever. They were unregulated. I remember watching sewage running down the street instead of going into gray water. They just had the hose. And you had sewage running down the street. I would watch people take five gallon buckets of lard and grease and things. And pour, I'm telling you, and pour it into the storm drains. Um, they didn't have restrooms. They didn't have an ability to wash. And if, if I couldn't wash my hands, I would wonder where is the proprietor washing their hands? Um, and they would pop up anywhere. Uh, one of the problems was they would pop up. Let's say you had a retail store, a restaurant and a parking lot over here. This, the owner of this parking lot would rent the parking lot to a food truck. Parked next to a stick-built restaurant. Now, the stick-built restaurant had restrooms, paid taxes. They were inspected by the health. They had sewer and water and heat and sanitation. And, and parking requirements and landscape requirements and everything else that we require of a business. Next to them was a food truck that had none of that. And there was, there was no regulation and they were just wherever, anywhere people get, sometimes they did pay rent to the owners and sometimes they didn't. Um, and like you've seen around town, a, a lean-to goes up. Um, it, in our town began to look horrific, especially along ninety-nine. So I am not interested. I was surprised to see the sixty days. I would like to take the sixty days off because that's an awful long time. And what happens is Bob, Bob's on this corner, Frank's on that corner, and then they swap corners and they get another sixty days. Or, you know, they go away for three months and come back.
Yeah.
Um, so I am not interested in seeing that level of unregulation, trashy looking, unsanitary places because they're not safe for our community. They don't look good. They don't present the right thing. A pod, however, where you've got three or more together and there is um, some kind of parking regulations, some kind of, you know, seating arrangement, some kind of landscaping, treating it just like you would any other business and they have to fall under the same regulations. Um, that'll keep our community safe. It, for me, the, the sanitation aspects of it was huge when we had these unregulated carts on every corner. Now, and the other part of Woodburn along ninety-nine is we have places where there's little pockets of counting. And they just showed up unregulated in, and that was another issue. So.
Yeah.
As much as I like the food pods with the covered seating and I can go and relax and maybe listen to some music, have, you know, like you say, I can have Thai food, you know, you can have Chinese. You can try the Indian cuisine. I love that idea.
Yeah.
But I don't love this unregulated, anybody pops up.
One of the first things that needs to happen is with that sixty day one is completely separate. And that, which is food, be for the duration of whatever event it is for, usually a day, a weekend, that kind of thing. And then the outdoor marketing be no food at all.
Exactly.
And so that there is that, that's just a simple separation and you don't need to think about the sixty days anymore. None of that, no temporary kind of bandage fixes, you know, and so we're kind of getting rid of that situation that is.
That, that, that would make a big difference. That one small step. And if you don't mind, that, that kind of leads to what some of these, Dan has kind of a few kind of questions in here. That's one of them, right? How, if you're going to have these, there's always the difference between an event, right? When we have, heck, we have a downtown, uh, what's the food event? I forget. We have a taste of wood, it's literally food trucks all over the place, but they aren't there for sixty days. They're there for three. Right? So two and a half or something like that. And that's what you'd be talking about. So when there's a food truck, something going on.
I, I also want to note that for those events that are downtown though, where is the public restroom? Because many of them tend to go into like the metropolis or some of the other businesses, but they're not necessarily consuming. And some of those businesses have either put locks on their bathrooms so that you, they will either, you know, you have to purchase something or basically to use it. Just as an NYI, take no, you know.
Uh, bat restaurants were put in, in, in a large part due to that, but I know that they get locked in a certain time as well.
Then, then, good, that is helpful, sir.
Our economic development uh, staff is actively looking into that particular issue.
And as long as a pod works, if you don't have an investor, is there going to be a city place?
Great question. So kind of, and when I, and if I'm going to move things a bit forward, and this isn't surprising in terms of that generally, nothing's locked in stone, just giving us some ideas to kind of fill around with some code and some more regulatory ideas. The idea, some of these are these, capping these at say, four days or something like that for a special event when you want to have food because that's a big something that goes on. Or if there's a one-off and they want to do something, if the, if the uh, Winco wants to have something out front or someone like that. Or sometimes the, the lumber place will want to have a little one-day event, right? That they put in great soccer terms. Super, right. Those are different. Those are not things that stick around. I think that's a great idea. We can handle that part of it. Coming back to the kind of pods, Dan's going to talk about this. Those are questions we don't have answers for, would.
But right now we don't allow anything.
Right. Right now, I don't have any, if someone said, I want to do this thing, I'd say, okay, you're a, you're a restaurant. Great. I have setbacks. I have SDCs. I have landscaping. I have parking. I have street improvements. And now, and they say, whatever, and they walk out the door. They would. So, but that's not what we want. We're trying to create something, again, to try to ease, ease that opportunity to come in. So what we need to ask and think about is, do you want them in every commercial district? Do you want them only along ninety-nine? Unlikely you're going to get ten of them. Or do you just want to, and, and so that's the kind of question that we can get to. Um, in terms of the city running one, you can advocate for it, but it's not like, you know, if the city wanted to take on that, we certainly could. We'd still have to follow whatever regulations we had. We always follow our.
What is that?
Who owns? So touch on the one that exists right now in ninety-nine. So up on north end of town of, it's a progress note, forgetting that progress. Uh, so that industrial property.
Real, industrial way.
Right. Oh, industrial way. Sorry. Uh, it's an industrial property. They are using the industrial regulation that says you can have a food truck. As long as you don't block a parking space or get in a, and a traffic aisle, period. So that's how they've been operating because that's what you can do under our code. So we would like to clean that up a little bit now and, and deal with it. That site has some other issues. Um, I don't want to talk too much about it because it may be coming in for you as part of the site plan approval. Um, or a variance or something of that effect, but we're working with them right now and a couple of issues they're having. But that's, to me, that would be something that you would have regulations to prevent a lot of that from happening.
Question about parking. So a lot of these have rented next to a, a business, right? And they're taking up parking. If we require business A to have fifteen parking spaces and ten of them are taken up by a food truck and, and their picnic tables, they are not meeting their fifteen space requirement.
They're so recent.
Right. So when they come in, that's one of the things that we, we have very few requirements that we have. One of them is that they have to have some parking. And you can take up parking if you have excess parking somewhere on your lot. But again, am I out there looking at where every picnic table is getting put down a week after I look at it? No.
Walmart, we counted the spaces, you know, they've had their um, garden supplies and, well, I'm talking about the dirt and things that are for sale and how many, and we've, I've been on doing this long enough that we looked at, well, how much of their parking lot can they use for retail? And I'm thinking, why does that not apply to uh, business downtown or on ninety-nine that quarter of their, quarter or half of the parking is taken up by they're, they're renting out to.
Parking. Yeah. Is there parking downtown that's not blocked? I mean, just on the street.
Damn, will you walk through some of these? Cause these, these are the questions to help give us some direction, even if it's just general feedback.
So it sounds, from what I've heard so far, it seems like the commission's more interested in the pod concept rather than allowing one-off carts to, to pop up throughout the city. Okay. I do want to just side note, I, about a week ago, Chris and I were at the Downtown Business Association meeting um, that Jamie Jank, our Economic Development Director puts on with downtown businesses. And uh, we heard the same feedback from them that they were, they weren't really con, concerned about competition.
Really?
Well, but they wanted it to be in one kind of centralized location where, where pods would go. Not using street parking, you know, they were concerned about sanitation, cleanliness. Uh, you know, making sure there's adequate trash bathrooms. They, they brought that up as well. So uh, we're.
But even if there, if somebody were to say find a location downtown, they wouldn't be opposed to it.
Right.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
Yeah. Um.
Cause I would have thought that that would be the one place that maybe want to exclude just because of the small businesses.
Ask them very directly that question.
Yeah.
And uh, I think the research that, uh, the economic research that's been done around this is that it's a, a different customer going to a food cart versus a sit-down restaurant. Uh, so they're not necessarily competing with the same potential customers.
And at one time I belonged to the WBA, the Downtown Association, and one of their complaints was these food trucks and their customers were taking up valuable parking. Parking is huge. So if it was at a pod where there was parking around the pod or something, yeah, they're not.
That's done. It's all parking.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. So if we're thinking more about the focusing on that food cart concept, um, are we uh, wanting to open it up to industrial commercial areas? So this is our zoning map. Uh, the orange is our kind of commercial area along ninety-nine here. The blue and the purple is the industrial area uh, in the northeast. Um, the pink here is our downtown. Uh, the rest of this is all the, kind of the yellow and orange or gold and brown. That's all the residential areas. Um, and then of course we have by the interchange, uh, the uh, Winco, Do It Best, Amazon, uh, industrial area, and then all the commercial there. industrial area, and then all the commercial there. So my question would be, sorry.
I guess all industrial and commercial?
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you're doing it over by Amazon, and that's really a book drive.
So do we have to decide, I guess, to, I guess, I'm, the part that would be difficult is if we're doing pods, then I guess it'd be tough to do the individualized, you know, so it's just like we either have to decide on like, uh, I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting at is we'd like to see them centralized, so I feel like that plan should come first so that we can have a place for these people to go because I feel like you can't do the other ones and well, yeah, you can just go post up next to Walmart. If that's not what we're looking for, I feel like we should maybe push the centralized location, then we have a, yes, there's a beautiful spot you can go to. Here it is, you know, I don't know.
But we also had, I know, I know you've got a different map that shows available lands and available spaces.
Can you overlap them?
I will.
That's awesome.
I don't think we have that up here.
I've seen it. I know it's around here somewhere, but um, it's a lot smaller.
And oh, it it is, it's a lot smaller. So if we are too restrictive, we may inadvertently um make it, right? And I will use an example, a real life example, when medical marijuana and marijuana dispensaries, but specifically marijuana, medical marijuana came to the city council. It may have been the city, it may have been the planning commission at that time, but when we were looking at that, we made our regulate regulations so narrow in scope that there was only one piece of property in the entire Woodburn area that was suitable for medical marijuana. And it was way out in the industrial area.
I think the alley wanted, wasn't it?
Don't say that out loud.
So strict, if it was only one piece of land, and that property owner was not interested in selling that land. And my point at the time, because both of my parents had died from cancer that year, was I really don't want my grandmother or my mother or somebody else who who needs medical marijuana for guacoma or whatever reason to have to go into the seediest part of town and then one little dark alley in the industrial zone.
It is not like that.
It was when we only had the one.
But you to get.
There are two.
Yeah, I went over there getting darker seed. During the day.
Right, but you know, if if we are too restrictive and say only in the industrial zone or only in this zone, we might inadvertently say overlook of a prime location.
Yeah, that's actually the reason for the third question on here is getting at the one of the marijuana standards is it can't be within a thousand feet of schools, parks, you know, all these things. And that's how you end up limiting it to that one location. Uh, so is that something you want to consider is having a minimum kind of separation between a food cart pod and another one? There has to be like a thousand feet between.
Between each.
No, between each pot. So uh, the yard versus um the plaza, you know.
So if you if you had one go on ninety nine here, could there be another one that opened up a block away or would they have to go some sort of minimum distance away?
Well, I think it matters. I mean, once they're established, they're, you know, people know which food carts are where and what they want to go to.
The thing, and I think I wouldn't see them setting up in the same way, probably. Uh, I can probably see it happening where there's maybe one that ends up having three because that's the number you have there is like three or more for a pod and then one that potentially is overdeveloped um that is able to contain more and more options and obviously without the income and and more welcome setup.
So it might get more of a developing thing than, I mean, there'll be, like you said, smaller ones, maybe a few on ninety nine, and maybe there'll be a big community one that's more centralized.
I think some of it will.
It probably be dependent on the economy, you know?
Yeah.
That's that's helpful. And I, you all know this, but remember that essentially what we do at the governmental and regulatory level is we just create that use is permitted in that zone. We sometimes go a little further, right? So, you know, we may make it a condition, maybe make gas stations a condition of use if they're within two hundred feet of residential, but by and large, it's a pretty simple table. And again, here, this this seems pretty easy to me, wherever you can have a restaurant, downtown or in the commercial district in this city, you're gonna have, you could open a food cart pod. I mean, in general, that's feeling right.
Yeah, and I think realistically for these, that's why I asked them about his kind of the budget. I mean, you're going into the west side, those are pretty big pieces of land and I, you know, that's millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I feel like we're automatically eliminating a lot, even if we change it, they're not going to go spend twenty million dollars for a piece of property over there to put a food cart that's making thirty thousand dollars a month.
I think you're right. We we get, you know, we get so many of these, what do you say, we have fifteen a year, a dozen a year? And I'll be honest.
Just the ones that come in.
Yeah, we we get five times that number of inquiries of people who want to do it and don't make it work. And I can say, I I can't count three that have wanted to be on the west side of town. So it just doesn't happen.
Slightly curious too, because and that uh, you'll have to remind me here, when we were doing the whole land use and what percentage um has been used up, there was, there was obviously not enough large industrial lots, there's only small ones. What is like that minimum size that you would see? And could some of these be apt for filling those?
Well, these would be, these are small, right? These are nowhere near the level of these industrial lots. These are, those industrial lots.
That they were like five and like five acres and less, you know, there's one of those small, you know.
Yep, we we do, and for industrial, that's small.
Yeah.
But, you know, these food cart pods, these could go and his was on a ten thousand square foot lot, so that's a quarter of an acre. And that was eight, right? That was eight carts plus a stand and a bar. So so these do fit in nicely in infill spots.
I don't think we want anything much bigger than that because then you're going to have parking and traffic issues.
Well, and they didn't have to deal with parking. It was already there.
Yeah, they they did not.
But that's that's included in that area. So if you try to put a, put more and more and more carts in there, you're going to have to have more space and that's just gonna, I think that's, we're going to outgrow ourselves before it's even open.
What, one more thing thinking about, again, there's a lot of detailed regulations, but it's helpful, they kind of, this is really good helpful feedback for us, more for Dan because he's the one I'm going to have write this. Um, don't kid yourself, we're going to copy and paste from other cities who have done this because it's been done fifty times in Oregon, companies who've done it well. So this kind of gives us direction, but they do that. They sometimes have a separation. They sometimes have a minimum size requirement. They sometimes say not in our downtown or only in our debt, right? So they, there may be different restrictions, so this is helpful for us in a lot of ways.
I think a minimum might actually be something we want to look at. Make sure they have enough space for at least three and the interior seating and some kind of facility or, you know. So we might look at, as you're browsing through them, you might find a minimum that makes sense.
So one thing that I'm going to throw this out there because I'm never shy about my two cents uh offering my two cents to you, is this idea of having these hookups. It's expensive. It's really expensive to walk in on day one. So I imagine sort of that we just heard the story of that garage setup where he came in and he said, great, so he's got what, eight different hookups, it sounds like? So he has these all installed ahead of time, that costs money. Those are all different meters, it's water, it's gas, they're all going underground, there's different utilities. I'm trying to imagine being the guy who's going to start, I'm imagining if I was like, you know, I think this will work and I think it might work in Woodburn. And then he walks into our office and I say, great, I want all the utilities hooked up and the central piece put together. And you have to, gonna have to put in some kind of, maybe it's some more parking, maybe not, maybe he's downtown, but he's going to need striping, he's going to need some landscaping, he's going to need to have it lit, right? And he's going, wow, you know, now I'm looking at, if that guy said it was how much money he threw out there?
Two million.
Let's say it's a million here, right? This isn't West Lynn. He's like, all right, that's a million dollars. I sure hope I can find eight people to consistently come for the next five years so I can make my money. That's a big investment, that's a lot to ask without knowing that upfront, right? Because the the truck comes and says, you know what, had a bad month, I'm out of here. And he literally is gone. So these are, I think that that West Lynn example is a bit of a, an anomaly. This is my two cents, I think.
I think that that makes sense for them. That's how they want to run their business. Doesn't mean that that's what we have to put in our.
That's the question, would we put something like that? That's what I'm guarding because there's a lot of advantages to it. I know where the truck's going, I can dictate where the signage, how it's going to be striped, I care about ADA, I want it to be safe for people to get in and out of, I want to meet all the requirements, I want to make sure the sanitation's done. Do you want a separate restroom that has to be on site or can they have six porta potties around it? These are the hard questions you're going to have because Dan can tell you how much it is to install the new restroom. And again, the guy says, well, now I'm out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a restroom. Again, I sure hope I can get people to fill this thing quickly. That's hard, it's it's an ask, but those are tough decisions. That's exactly how we think of them. That's right, it's a mobile home park. You find the lots, here's the slots, you put them into, set up the infrastructure and go.
Because the mobile home park, you're getting five hundred dollars a month free rent, twenty one hundred dollars a month.
All right, the thing that I'm concerned about, and I always am here, that it's going to look not good. I mean, because it's just the way things are here. And.
And that's something we can have standards for, so we can have landscaping requirements, screening around the perimeter. Um, those are definitely things we can put in our zoning code. Um, a couple of ideas that I thought of uh would be pretty simple to write in. So these are uh two examples. Uh, this is, the bottom one is uh West Salem and then corner fourteen is Oregon City, I think. Um, but you see, they have these little planter boxes, it's kind of along the street front there. Uh, these guys actually have a bit of it, an elevated area, so they've landscaped this uh open uh dirt area there. Um, but I mean, there's ways to put in requirements to make sure it does. Right. I think this is minimum, it should be part of it. I think landscaping, I think, you know, because the thing is, uh, and a lot of our, you know, we have these little tents that, you know, are limby and, you know, they, uh, and so again, I I know why they're doing it, you know, they can't, you know, they they want to provide shelter, but um, I it's just, you know, these are permanent structures, you're like the top picture, I mean, they're, you know, they provide a sense of like this is here, like it stands out and we have, so I, you know, I think that's at minimum, we should have these.
That's, that's a really good point, but the issue we, just on the regulatory side is, the question is always, when do I need a building permit, right? Because then it gets expensive. Now you have to be code requirements, now it's going to get inspected, you have to hire professionals, as opposed to someone over the weekend that throws up their the tent, right? Because that's.
And I don't know about. I don't know about the same one, but the corner fourteen did not start out with a built, a little building like that. It started out with a really nice tent structure until they knew they were going to make it work and could get all the permits put through. So it doesn't have to start that way, but they were headed that in this direction the whole time.
So we we do have, we have some pretty good ideas and some, some things are, you probably hear me preach this a lot, I'm a big fan of landscaping and perimeter landscaping because don't kid yourself, it's cheap. Landscaping doesn't cost nearly as much as putting in a brand new sidewalk and extending the new water line, right? Those are expensive. Landscaping doesn't cost much money and it's very impactful. Um, so those are things that we can definitely require and we'll we'll look for in terms of the pods that we put together language.
Could I just step in for a second here? As far as um one of the expenses that is challenging for a lot of these folks right now, there was just an article in, I think it was Willamette Week today or yesterday about it, is that one of the new state regulations is that all of your gray water has to either be on your food truck and pumped every week or you have to be hooked into the sanitary system. And that hookup to the sanitary system would be a substantial expense, that would be something we have, we have to require that, basically, the state is going to require us to do that. So that's, you know, you don't necessarily have to require everybody to move to natural gas, you don't necessarily have to require certain other things, but that is a substantial expense that we're going to have to figure out a way to make that work. And so that's something.
Other, you know, these are not designed to pick up and drive away once a week to dump the gray water.
My opinion, that's why I would love, my personal is the fair view approach where the city took care of that. And again, they managed it, provided the space and it turns out, I don't know if you have any pictures of that one, but.
I don't.
It's uh, the, it's called the fork. And again, the city and I, I have their minutes from their media, I have it all on my phone. Yeah, so there was an owner that had a piece of property on a corner lot and the city came to the owner and said, we'll lease it from you for X amount of dollars. They revamped it, they, you know, came down and striped it, put the parking lot in, built a beautiful structure on it and they assigned a gentleman uh to run it. So they paid him fifty thousand dollars a uh a year. All he's in charge of is events, he puts on bingo nights, he puts on just events for the family to come out. Uh, they charge twenty two hundred dollars as well and they have, I think, thirteen uh food carts. And he says, we have a waiting list. So, and so.
And each food cart is independent, they have their own.
Yeah, they're they're hooked up directly as well, I believe. Uh, so again, the city is the one that had this entire process. Uh, and so they're the ones that are collecting the rent checks. He just, you know, and so they hired another uh company to do the bar area because most of these, these carts can't sell the alcohol, it's sold at a central location inside. Uh, and so the same thing. Uh, and that's why I feel like if it's, because again, it is going to be tough for a private citizen to build something like this, in my opinion, in this city. But I feel like a bigger entity like the city may be able to fork up three million dollars to make this happen and then we have it for the rest of, and we have a place for the city to, you know, to make this happen. So I feel like it's more feasible that way and then we get what we want, we get a beautiful place with the direct hookups and it's a long term plan, we're not, we do want it to be profitable, I think eventually, you know, I think it will, I just, I think they will, but that's why I feel like it'd be something worth.
I like that idea and not only for that, but also thinking of the events that sometimes the city puts on as well and the relationships with some of those vendors and creating other events, I think, seems to match.
Entirely above my pay grade. Great idea, happy to spend the city's money.
I don't know, once I heard about it, I was like.
And I agree, I agree, it would be. You know, I've, I only have.
We almost have to take over a park.
Kitted Dan that, you know, you make it the the Pix pod, right? You take over the old Pix parking lot, you put a food cart pod in there. Yeah, and make it more permanent. We are good at that. The city does, I think, a really good job of putting together these events, coordinating them with the the different vendors that we have, we have these really good connections. A different question, that's, it's a different issue. This has to be done first. Then we can.
Because even the city would have to follow the.
We sure would.
I'll have to send you that. Yeah, I'll have to send it to you. Well, so on the utility discussion here, um, how do you guys feel about requiring permanent connections for water, sewer, gas, power? What about propane?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, and I think the attorneys are, to the attorneys on to a a good pointer about what has to happen, right? They're going to be on the hook for some of this.
And that's the best way for us to ensure that that we are compliant.
Yeah. If it's not now, it'll eventually probably be a standard for a lot of these, I'm assuming since they're becoming so popular and just.
If I brought the fire marshal in here, he'd come in with a big T-shirt that said, I hate food trucks. You can probably imagine, these are, these are horrible nightmares for them to deal with, these propane tanks go off like firecrackers and they're all right next to each other and there's a lot of different connections and these things are literally driven on the road and bumped around. It's, they're very, they're very dangerous. Uh, and you've hear all the time, these stories, these things going up and it's always the propane tank on there.
And I'm concerned about requiring either natural gas or PGE because of the changes we are seeing to natural gas. You know, they're, they're taking out gas stoves and things like this.
There was an explosion on Settle Mine last week.
Yeah, right. So requiring natural gas, knowing that there's a high probability of it not being viable in the future concerns me. But I also, but that same way, you have to cook with Pete, with Powell, PGE. I know chefs are like, but I want to, I want to grill, I want.
Yeah. So I was, in addition to John in West Lynn, I spoke to one of the owners who developed the checkpoint two to one pod here. And that's down in West Salem. And he told me that Salem prohibits propane tanks as well. So John said, West Lynn does not allow propane tanks and none of Salem.
And generators, I mean, you didn't want a bunch of noisy generators in place where everybody's trying to chat, have dinner.
If we really want to control it and make it safe, then the city might have to be the ones like Commissioner Bravo was talking about that, that puts, maybe gets a grant. So that we can say, yep, we'd love to have you bring your food truck in here. You have to hook it up this way and using these types of connections. And I think asking a developer to come in and do that is, is probably not going to happen in our area today. Maybe in 10 years or so, but probably not today. I think a food cart pod would be amazing for Woodburn.
What is that Marion County requirements that you have to have onboard water and sewer tanks, even if you're hooked up to the municipalities?
Well, they get their electricity, but they can't, but they have to keep their water onboard.
So that came from a lot of the documents I was reading, coming down from OHA. Looking over at Chris here. I know the rules were recently updated in 2020, Chris, right? Like February 1st, 2020, but then COVID happened. So they extended the timeframe for basically any new cart that came in to get a license through your county that reviews all the state sanitation rules. If you came in as a brand new cart to get a brand new license after some date in 2020, you were now subject to all these new rules. But they extended the timeframe for you to actually conform with those rules. And this was one of them. So before, I think it was a lot looser. I, I'd have to go back and read a little bit further on it, but.
The big thing from before was as far as hooking up to the sewer system goes, instead of doing that, you were allowed to have these big cubes of water. Basically, it was basically just a giant cube that could hold your gray water. So it would go from the truck into the giant cube and it would sit there still on site, but off of the truck itself. And those were allowed for a very long time and it's kind of the standard. And the result of that was that you only had to have somebody come out and pump that big cube every, you know, maybe once a month or once every couple of months because it could hold a lot more. But under the new regulations, those are no longer permitted. And so you have to have your tank on the unit itself, which means you have to have somebody come out and pump it pretty much weekly. And from the articles that I've read, I'm no expert, but from the articles that I've read, there actually are not many companies that do that. And so you have to get on one of these companies' lists just to get into their schedule and more or less to get onto a weekly schedule. The article I read today about the carts at Portland State that were closing, those are four carts that are right in front of the Portland State Library that been there forever. They were there when I got my master's degree. And they, because of their location, they're not on a central sewer line. They're right there in the middle of the park blocks in Portland. And they're having to close them because there's no way to hook them up to municipal sewer in that particular location. So it's definitely a challenge.
Question. It says food carts must have onboard water and sewer tanks. Do you have to use them? If we provided hookups for municipal water and sewer and we had a city ordinance saying you had to use that, as long as they have an onboard water tank, which they would have, and a sewer tank, which they would probably have, even if it's tiny, doesn't mean they have to use it, right? They just have to have it.
That's my understanding, yeah.
And it's, I appreciate that this kind of gets to Commissioner Bartel and Commissioner Bravo's comments about these, it's going to be expensive to set these pods up, whether it's a utility requirement that's going to come down to get their, you know, food handle license that each of these groups have to get to having these covered areas. They're going to need building permits. I'm going to make them do it. They're getting a fire marshal review who's going to have comments and make them do things. So forget any other expenses that sort of we might put in a regulatory sort of manner. They're, they're going to cost some money. It's not like a vacant lot. And we're open for business as it is now. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. There's a reason they have these health standards. There's a reason we have fire standards, et cetera. And I think overall, we just want to make sure we're, we're trying to do it as fair as we can. We're trying to encourage someone to come in and do something creative in, in the community.
But again, we don't want to go back to where it was 20 years ago with the, the hose running down the street and down the gutter.
I will also add on the fire standard side of things. My understanding is that through Marion County, when they get their health permit, part of their health permitting process is that the fire marshal has to come out and give them the green light on their propane system and on their, there's a technical term for this, but essentially on their flame retardant system that they have to have over their cooking apparatus. So it's not like they're completely not going through the fire marshal right now. They do have to do that when they get their Marion County health permit. But after they get that permit, when they renew it, my understanding is that the fire marshal doesn't do like a as thorough of an inspection. They basically go through and just say, you know, okay, everything is still the same, so you're fine. And again, you know, you are talking about carts that move around and things bump around and that kind of thing. So it's not ideal, but that's something that you're going to have to strike the balance of with the cost of, say, requiring natural gas, which is a pretty big expense to pipe it into a facility and then pipe it to every one of the carts. So.
Dan's going to cover just a few more, kind of the, these are things that we're finding in other regulations and things to think about. If you got kind of initial thoughts on these, that's fine. I just want to let you know, these are the kind of, these are kind of regulations that we'll probably have included in there that we can discuss and sort of delete or massage as we go forward.
Yeah, focusing here on seating areas, restrooms. I will say, since sending out my little list of questions, discussion questions to you last week, I did a bit of a deeper dive into statute and administrative rule in the sanitation side of things. And it does look like moving forward, the rules from the state are going to require restrooms being in a building. So this question about porta potties is no longer relevant.
You mean an idea what a commercial restroom would cost, Dan?
So from our recent Dove Landing subdivision, these were permits that the builder submitted an application for, got pulled for our public park up there in Dove Landing. This two-stall bathroom to pipe the water and sewer out to the, the small structure. And then actually build the structure itself. It's a little under 250,000. And then these were two other, just kind of small shelter structures that they, they pulled permits for as well. What's that? The bathroom holes in the.
It's a shelter. What's in it?
No, that's for picnics, I think.
Yes, those are.
10% of the 2 million, by the way, doesn't seem like a lot, does it?
Dan, under the new regulations, will you be, still be allowed to be within, I think it was 500 feet of another business? And then have a, a documented relationship with that business to use the restroom? Is that still going to be permitted?
That is allowed. So if you have an agreement with a nearby business or something that's open to the public to use, that would suffice for the state county review.
I'm looking at a lot of regulations by Marion County and they, Woodburn's in Marion County, so they have to follow all those regulations.
They would, yeah.
So it looks like they've addressed a lot of the concerns that we've talked about.
Right. So for, for our end, and this is something that we can come back to next time with some, actually some draft language to review. Talking about seating areas. Do you want all seating within a pod to be covered, maybe 50/50? There's just some options. Do you want it paved? Is gravel okay? Wood chips, you know? Some of the more detailed questions about how people are going to actually come to us and say, well, it's cheaper to get a yard of wood chips than it is to pave with asphalt concrete. So. Also pods might need a storage structure. I would want to follow up actually with the two guys that I've spoken to already, John being one of them on, on storage and if that's actually needed or not.
But, you know, a pod might need storage, might need storage for chairs, might need storage for good.
Cleaning facilities for the restroom, you now have to build onsite and not.
Right, yeah. Another thing to consider is the central garbage area, you know, a dumpster. Right now, typically we require those to be behind a, a concrete block wall.
And garbage service has to be required too.
Absolutely. Some other things to consider about in terms of site planning. The driveway and the parking lot, should those be paved or is gravel okay? Do we require sidewalks around the street frontage? If there's not anything there yet. How much parking should we require? Not sure if I've ever seen a drive-through. Well, the coffee, coffee can, can sometimes do drive-throughs, but it's very peculiar. But all questions to, to think about.
So I, it's odd, I appreciate sort of giving you kind of a feel for these kind of questions that we'll have. I don't want you to think that there's going to be 90 pages of regulations. There won't be. They're really pretty simple, but these are big questions, right? And it's really about what, what are you not going to ask of a food cart pod that I would ask of a brand new Chick-fil-A that was going to open up there? Because they're not the same thing. And some of those are like a sidewalk. Are you going to make someone put in a sidewalk to the new food cart pod? That's a lot of money. I'm going to advocate for it. It would be your decision about how you'd like to deal with it and these other things.
Yeah, I am, I'm also kind of thinking about those and like sidewalks, for example, and putting it together with a parking. If it were to be a place that's somewhat already walkable, you know, I'm thinking also obviously downtown, yeah. Where it's definitely walkable and public transportation, I'm okay with being lenient on the parking a bit versus, you know, if it's kind of out on the edge of town, definitely need more parking. And again, that would also indicate how much of sidewalks you potentially need or don't need kind of thing. So I think location based sometimes plays a role in that.
Yeah, we can, we can come up with something like that.
Right now, our downtown already doesn't have a minimum parking requirement for anything. So.
The strength where that one law.
Regarding paving, like, or covered and all of that, I'm easy percentage to say right now is 50/50 right now in my mind. Definitely open to whatever other thoughts may come through, but I'm also thinking like ADA and be, you know, people that needing, needing for accessibility issues. Gray, the, the gravel is not going to be necessarily the best. I'm opposed to the wood chip. That's not a part of the landscape. Yeah, exactly.
More likely to trip and.
Yeah.
Clean.
Clean, yes. I tried to get a, a cost estimate for
For one right there.
For paving, just to see what it would be like. I never heard back from a couple of folks on, on the private side, but this was a city project. When we recently redid Legion Park, we also repaved that parking lot. And the council approved a $200,000 expense to have that repaved. And kind of the asterisk there is the city's required to pay kind of the prevailing wage. It's much higher than a typical private developer would pay. And this is also 30,000 square feet of, of pavement. So if you kind of cut it into a third, maybe 66,000.
It isn't, I get just a bit of a, I'm not advocating for making it cheaper, but it, paving is one of those big expenses. Because if you picture, I'm, I'm, what's the lot that was vacant that has the little shelter on it at 99 and not Cleveland? Is it on Young? So the small corner lot there, it's not paved. But again, paving isn't getting your brother-in-law to go out there and throw down some asphalt. It means doing it the right way and getting a permit. So now they have to, now they're going to have storm water that they're going to have to treat. They're going to have to put somewhere, they're going to put in filters. It's going to have to get inspected by us. It's going to be a lot more money than they think. I'm certain of it because it's got to be heavy enough for cars and fire trucks to drive on. Now it's going to be really thick and it's going to be specked out and it's got to be graded.
Well, they're also, you know, they're talking about they'll have to put in water lines, so they'll have to clean it up anyway and then repaint over.
Right. All, again, just all facts of, just the facts of development. Once you, once you legalize these, that's what these things.
Thing that comes before us, right?
Not easy.
Parking, it's not cheap, it's, you know. Traffic, I mean, all of that stuff.
I, I do want to go back to the reference you made though. I mean, like the mobile home parks or the, the parks, you know, where you're already having to do that anyway. If anything, it's not fully paved, but still.
That's all, just keeping, again, in my, in my mind, it's a what am I not asking for here that I would ask for a new Chick-fil-A?
And I think the tough part is, just, I just, because it depends, you know, if you're asking me about this corner lot, like, yeah, you know, I mean, that's where it's just, I guess it's a tough challenge because if, you know, if it's a place that's already pretty got set up and it's, you know, then I'm not going to require them to have, you know, if it's already got a nice sidewalk and it's got pretty, you know, so a place like this, yeah, I'd like to have parking there, but that's going to be impossible at a place like this. You know, like that little corner lot is really tough.
This is bad because there's so much traffic.
Right.
There's a traffic light.
Right. So it's just like, that's a challenge.
So this, I think this property is 10,000 square feet, just like that gas station.
This is an old gas station.
That's an old gas station.
And etc. Where do they find the tanks underneath? We make them pay.
But you could turn that into a four. Yeah, that's actually a good place because of all the building that's going on right next to it that we approved.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, it is the same size, however, the one that was shared did not have to worry about parking. This one has to think about including it in those. So that is a big difference.
Wind traffic is way different in Willamette than it is on Highway 99.
At that corner, yeah. And in this particular case, I'm sure ODOT would have something to say. Did we give you enough information?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I got plenty to run with now.
I, I appreciate you being patient with kind of the loose nature, but it's, I think it's a good way to come at and approach something brand new here at the city that we have before we start putting pen to paper. And again, these, these aren't going to be nearly as complicated when they're done as you might think. But these are all, these are, these are important questions. And we have, one nice thing is we actually have, aside from the fact there's a lot of other cities who have these codes and have tweaked them a bit to try to make them work. And we can see what it looks like on the ground where they've been implemented. Is we have a, actually a really good list of existing food cart operators in town who've been doing this for the past three years. And, and we, they're on our little rolodex, right? We can just boom, 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 and we'll involve them and say, how does this work? Is this a, what does this mean? How could this fly? What's a good or bad idea? It doesn't mean you have, you know, take everything what they say, but that's really helpful for us. That's a good thing for us to be able to have. Great. That, that was all we had. It's really helpful for us.
I've got a question, actually. So how does this connect? Because a lot of this we were speaking about and the definition being basically a vehicle, moving cart, some sort of thing like that. But there are, and I'm thinking one in particular, that is like a setup that's just kind of done on weekends outside of a business. It's not really a cart, they just. setup that's just kind of done on weekends outside of a business. It's not really a cart. They just, I mean, they do take out their things and set it up outside. Uh, prepare the food.
Thinking downtown.
Um, I'm actually thinking, um, outside of La Parranda. Really good tacos.
This came up.
Uh, yeah.
I was gonna ask, Dan knows the code better than me. There's yet another wrinkle in our code, which I think comes closer to addressing that. We have a provision, and you'll tell me where I'm wrong because I get it wrong all the time. We've provisioned our code that says an existing retail operation or store can utilize their sidewalk in front of their property, as long as it's like not more than ten percent of their overall square footage. And as long as they keep it open, the ADA route open, and as long as they bring it all in, I think at night, something like along those lines. Which is pretty reasonable. So people can put out there whatever kind of fruit thing they want to have, or they want to go out and grill something fun. And then bring it all back in for what they sell.
When you know, like in Silverton, they have the wine walk where you go, we want to encourage businesses to be able to have a sidewalk sale or to have a little cap on occasion to have some kind of event that was outside the door.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's worked out pretty well. I mean, I think of, you know, I'll get it when I go to Safeway sometimes, they'll be barbecuing ribs or something out front because they're selling them inside. And that's sort of the idea. You come in, you open it up for the day and then you bring it back in.
Yeah, and one of the kind of parameters around that is that it's something you already do inside your store. So you're not a clothing store that sets out a grill and starts grilling food. That that's something you could look at changing if that's your motive.
Sidewalk sale and things like that.
That was a part of a conversation that we had with the Downtown Business Association. Was it definitely came up in that conversation was what you can and can't have in front of your shop and
currently. The windows are supposed to be covered no more than fifty percent.
That's, that was also part of the conversation.
And and generally speaking, I, again, this is a generalization. I think the sidewalk openings and uses work pretty well. I mean, even Hillier's Ford has a they throw a tent out there, they put stuff in front to get sell hot dogs and to draw people in. Just like the the Walmart does and the Safeway. And then the shop, we get a lot of these downtown where they bring it out and, you know, they're selling churros and the rest of the kind of thing that they have. Uh, generally speaking, as long as the sidewalk's open, I think it's great, right? More activity on the sidewalk, as long as things are cleared, I think it creates a lot of vitality to it. But and that, but that's different. We weren't looking at touching on much of that with these.
I say those smells usually make you really hungry, though. No, I'm heading there.
That was it, man.
Do we have any more discussion or should I go ahead and close the work session? All right. I don't need a motion. I can just close it, right? I'm going to close that work session. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, do we have any business from the commission? Anything coming up you want to share? Okay, about updates from staff?
Can I rattle off a couple of things real fast? First of all, I think what I I think you can expect to see is come back with something in thirty days. Is that pretty good? We'll come back, continue the discussion. Maybe Dan will even play around with some uh, language uh, and some examples from other cities.
Yeah, I'll have a draft ready.
Be very helpful for us.
But it'll still be a work session environment. Won't be a public hearing.
Uh, uh, one thing to think about um, is you've heard me say a little bit, I'm, so I'm working on the budget right now. We're coming into budget season. So I'm looking at building, planning, budget, and this probably won't surprise you. But in terms of building activity, construction activity, we are on, continue to be on fire and we're going to continue to keep building out all the approvals that we have kind of gone through in the last three years here at the city on the ground, right? You see a lot of construction activity. There's going to, there's more coming down the pike. I'm getting more plaits done. Some things from Chick-fil-A on down are getting, you know, getting those final building permits approved. So building activity wise, a lot going on, no slowdown for, I can tell you for at least twenty-four months. I have a good feel for when those things are going to happen. What we have, these things aren't even full yet, so we, so the neck, the other part to that, the other component is sort of what you all see at the front end of that on the planning commission side on what I call the quasi judicial side for projects coming in. I can tell you, we're getting full, for lack of a better word, in terms of like vacant, available, easy sites to develop. Um, so we canceled a meeting earlier this year. I I'm unless someone insists on it, I don't have anything scheduled for your next meeting for quasi judicial items. Um, just keep that in mind. It's, I'm I'm showing a sort of a lighter year in terms of pre-application activity that we're getting, interest in development for vacant parcels, been a pretty significant slowdown. That's sort of something you look ahead for. You know, what's that mean, nine months from now? It means that sort of that wave of development activity slung down. The big reason is, I don't think it's so much the economy. I think it's much more land and available properties that we have.
The property on Boons Ferry, the one that was in a lot, that L-shaped, that was going to lot the park um, parkland?
Yes.
I saw it for sale. I want to say Zillow. Do you know anything?
I do not know. Uh, maybe for sale. Uh, there and they have their engineering drawings, if not approved, very close to approve. There's a new, they're putting in a new arterial on the south side of that. And the city, of course, has the park, Three Acre Park right there that we're actively working on. I think that's, we want to get that going this year, I think.
Where's that at?
Plane. This is the Boons, the Boons Crossing.
Oh.
Park just as south of the railroad tracks. As part of the old Boons Crossing development. So we have a three acre park there that the applicant gave us with that. And that's a, that's a park that we're looking to get going very soon. We have a lot of activity just today I'm working on. Um, got a few other kind of quick things, uh, not that we don't have I don't want to say nothing coming up. We have a couple of projects. I'm bringing your attention. So if you get asked about them in terms of quasi judicial anything related to a land use application, you shouldn't be discussing as much as possible with the public because you might be hearing it. You're going to be the decision makers on it. I know you all know that. It's a quick reminder. I say that because we have a couple of semi controversial projects that are starting in the pipeline right now. Uh, we have two gas stations that have come in. One is just sort of on the north side of Safeway on the east side of town. It's right in the middle of those multifamily developments that are coming in. Uh, the other is one that we saw about eighteen months ago. You saw about eighteen months ago that's going in, uh, right next to the Dairy Queen. Uh, where the old two banks used to be at Oregon Way. Um, again, those are app, those are applications that are coming in. If you get questions about it, you're requested to defer those questions. Tell them to ask staff all the questions they have and they can come down and vent or give their support here at the, at the meeting when we hold it. Um, you're not advised to have those discussions. You call them expertise contacts. Avoid them as much as you can. And if you do have them, just let us know about it and formally let people know at the hearing. That's your legal requirement. Wanted to quickly touch on uh, other legislative items we're working on. So the nice thing about having less quasi judicial current projects planning is we get to do things like fix the code, work on food cart. Work, we're going to work. We also have in the pipeline, we're going to do some work on our sign code. It needs a lot of work. Could use some clarification. It's going to get straightened out a lot. It's going to be a lot of work for you, more work sessions, more legislative work. I'm just kicking off a project to start a new UGB expansion, uh, which is for the, we've talked about a lot. This is for the urban reserve area. We're only talking about industrial land on the west southwest part of town. Think of south of the Amazon site and a little bit east of I five, that pocket of land over there. It's, I think, two hundred and thirty acres. Uh, it was designated as what's called an urban reserve. Uh, it was eight years ago, it got designated that when the city went through their last urban growth boundary. Um, that means as soon as we decide to expand or the need it requires us to expand our boundaries for for industrial land, that's where we have to go. This is all familiar to you because we've been talking about it a lot. We just went through an economic opportunities analysis with a buildable lands inventory that determine we need more land. That's where we're going to be going. That process is going to kick off. You'll be seeing a lot of work on that in the next couple of months. Uh, well, actually, it might take a few months to get the the prep work ready and get it in front of you. Ultimately, it'll be the a recommendation that I have to come from this body as well. And I'm doing a transportation plan for that area, sort of a a transportation system plan, subarea plan, just for that exact district. So that we can think about what it means transportation wise, uh, make sure that can be served for future development. That's another plan that you all are going to see and have some input on. We'll have public hearings for. Those are probably summer projects for you. Just super fast, I'll just want to touch on because I know you don't, I I I, maybe you do all watch the city council meetings. I hope you do watch. Uh, but I want to give you an update on a couple of city council items that are, I think, germane for some of the work that you do. The, they formally approved the Parks Recreation Plan. You all did that master plan. Made that recommendation going forward. They didn't make any changes to it. That got adopted. They also adopted the tree code. Um, can't tell you, they were really appreciative of the work you did. They didn't make a single change to the tree code. Because you had asked a lot of questions, went through it all. Uh, they also adopted as part of the overall master fee schedule, we had some specific changes to the fees for for cutting down trees, tree preservation, et cetera. Um, didn't, I don't I'm, I'm certain, they did not make any changes to either one of those. And those are both formally adopted, about a thirty day adoption period before they go into effect. One more thing that I I'll bring up because it's kind of jumped over you is that an emergency, not an emergency housing shelter, I think is the right word for it, uh, was approved or at least was in front of the city council. I want to talk about it for a second because something you might get, you might have heard about. Let me step back a second. So at fifteen sixteen Harcastle, where we've had a a warming and cooling emergency center, we've had it there for probably two years. When the temperature gets to a certain over, I think eighty-five or ninety degrees or something, it can open. And when it's below about thirty, they could open up. Basically, they opened up the church, Church of Christ in there. And there was a group that opened that up. They got it, they got all their permits from us to do that as a warming center. The new group out of Salem, and I'm going to get the name wrong. Oh. The Community Action Coalition.
Mid Willamette Valley Community Action.
Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, yeah.
Community Action Agency, thank you. Um, a very well-funded group who's been doing this kind of operation uh, a lot in Salem. They've been at this business for a long time. They have come in and they've decided to open up a a a shelter there, which is essentially going to be tents that operate in the parking lot. There's going to be, I think they're proposing two, possibly three tents that they open up to have a around thirty, up to thirty people that they could put in there for houseless people, the houseless community. They can come and stay there. Um, they're going to run it. They have a lot of wraparound operations from job support, mental health, all the other, all the other things that that community often needs. Um, they're a holistic group and they they do a lot of that. That's going to be opening up in about thirty days is the day they've targeted to opening that. They're going to use a little bit of the church inside. There's some seating areas that are areas where they can set up cots. They were already set up there for the warming shelter. That's pretty simple. But what's new about it is there'll be these outdoor tents that can be set up uh, for heat and they can heat them and cool them uh, for the houseless community. And there's also either four or five separate parking spaces that could use for someone to stay in a car and sleep overnight. And those are for families. Um, there's a requirement that if someone is a houseless uh, family uh, is looking for somewhere to stay, they don't stay in the same places, sort of the rest of that community. They have their own separate area.
Hey Chris, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So it, so if they're going to take over that space, are there, will there be alternative spaces for warming or cooling centers as needed since the one that's been being used is now going to be taken up with other things?
So there's no reason that, I, so I, I shouldn't say that I don't know that they're going to be open three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, this is the, they have their opportunity to be opened every day, but it's certainly likely that maybe they don't have a need for it and they don't open their doors, in which case does the warming and shelter operation, it could could still be open for that purpose. The group that was running the warming shelter operation isn't going to be involved in that any longer. But that doesn't mean it's, couldn't still be that for a different purpose, if that makes sense.
We're, we're still going to need warming and cooling centers for our families who while the other, the new services are needed as well, I don't know that families would be super comfortable sharing space in a situation like that all the time. And if they're not taking advantage of warming and cooling shelters, that could cause real health issues for some little kiddos, which is what my clinic is all about. Just a thought.
Sure.
So.
I, I agree. You know, these aren't city-run facilities. These are nonprofits that run these and we don't, we have a warm, we sometimes set up our own little warming, cooling centers, library thing for.
You said though, it's, it's like the tents are set up for shelters. The church inside would still be the one that's utilized mostly for cooling and heating centers. And I would assume MWV CAA uh, would have the knowledge and a- at least to be able to kind of settle that.
Absolutely. Again, there's nothing preventing them from using it. It was set up for that previously. They, their operation includes both, and there's absolutely no reason they couldn't do that. It's not, it's not a program. It's not something we run. Uh, one of the things I wanted to mention, because if you get asked questions about it, and I think this is important, is this wasn't a city council decision. It wasn't a decision that came to you. It was a, this is an actual state mandate. Uh, this, the legislature has been making changes recently to make they make it easier for houseless, emergency houseless services to be provided. Um, and this is one of those provisions. They had a few simple standards they had to meet, came across my desk, reviewed it, I gave it an approval because it met those statutory requirements. There's no appeal. There's no land use decision. There's no city involvement at all, except for what I mentioned. Now, with that being said, fortunately, our council is providing some grant money for them, provided eighty thousand dollars. I can't remember exactly where it came from exactly.
Um, it was ARPA funds.
ARPA funds.
So it's still providing money for it or just?
I, I can't say, I honestly don't know where where they get their money from.
Not specifically for these. I'm not, I'm, because I don't know. But in general, the CAAs throughout the state do receive state funding. And um, whether it be general um, state funds that they have for the services and everything that they do have already. There's the additional possibility of um, some of the executive order funds that could be potentially also heading there. I'm I'm trying to remember which ones were the regions right now. Um, but the, I mean, they they get some from the state.
It's, it's out there. I, I feel bad leading by saying they're really well-funded, but they're very well-funded, right? They, they have a lot of these services. This is not a mom and prop nonprofit who's just struggling and doing on a shoestring. Yeah, not at all, not even close to it. One of the, sure. I can get you that information. How's that? And there's a couple, of course, we have, they do these point in time.
Yeah.
Right. Point in time counts, which are helpful, which is, they do this very intensive one-time search. These groups probably have a better feel for what the real number is, so I can give you both. They've given us what they think the number is. And we know what the pit count is, which is like the official number we have. They're not the same, um, and it changes a lot. But what I think is, what I thought was really encouraging about the fact that the city council was involved in providing them with some money, was it meant that they, this group has a contract with us uh, with the city that are, because it's tied to some money that we're giving them. So there are certain stipulations that we were able to negotiate, work with them on. Everything from it's going to be fenced in, uh, exactly how many people are going to be in there. Um, their outreach that they had to have with the neighbors going forward, reporting requirements they have to bring back to the city going forward. Um, again, these weren't, Dan, these, it was a, certainly a cordial agreement. Um, and it's all written out now, and it's written out because we have, again, because we, the city, put some money into that. If we hadn't, we wouldn't have had any terms or standing whatsoever. So I thought that was encouraging.
Chris, what church is that?
It's the Church of Christ. It's on, it's fifteen sixty Harcastle. It's about one block off ninety-nine. It's right behind Miranda. Right, exactly. It's Loving's Operations.
Chris, can I add something, uh, perhaps to Commissioner Bartel's uh, concern? So my understanding, and I'll, I'll give the caveat, I was not the lead attorney on this project, so I'm not I'm familiar with it, but I didn't do all, much of the work around it. But my understanding of the tent setup that they have is they actually do have mobile HVAC systems for that tent that for those tents that should be handling heating and cooling. I don't know what that means for the current church setup as a, has been used for an emergency heating and cooling center. I don't know what will happen with that contractor, who is going, if anybody is going to take that over, but um, I suppose what I'm getting at is that you wouldn't necessarily be losing that church space as a potential space for heating and cooling because my understanding of the mobile tents that they have set up is that their HVAC systems, they've run them in, I think, some pretty extreme conditions and they, they seem to be working fine.
Yeah, and it's exactly as you. Yeah, and it's exactly as you said, that there's no reason they couldn't be both.
Yeah.
Right. They're very, I mean, they're delineated with tents and the others inside a church building. That, that was all I had, just a couple of interesting things at the council and wanted to keep you up to date on where we're at development wise. And I am not anticipating a second March meeting, because I don't have anything on it. But I do expect April eleventh will be our next meeting. And I know this item will be on it, and we'll see what else. Maybe some discussions about the UGB amendment process.
Anything else from staff? Given that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm eager to adjourn.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Meeting adjourned.